But their budget meetings at five, four, six? Every day? Another meeting that I'm forgetting that was. I think the one was about Wednesday or something.
I think how I understand you have to read the title. Like the whole board.
This is like the second one.
Alright, so this one out now.
Hey, everybody, it's six P M. Let's get this meeting started. Let's do roll call first, please. Kramer?
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Coons? Here. Harris?
Here.
Service?
Here.
Everybody's here. Like to welcome everybody here and thanks to everybody for coming in. Got a big crowd tonight, so. Uh, yeah, that's exciting. So call for changes, a review of current agenda items. Does anybody have any changes they'd like to make? Skip over that, sorry, folks. Let it be legions. Alright, thank you. Okay, now let's move on to the current agenda items. Is there any changes? Anyone like to propose? See any, anyone like to make the motion for approval?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Hey, Aaron makes a motion to approve. On a second, send any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye. You voting, Shannon?
Aye.
And carries. My eyes. Very good. Consent calendar approval of July eighteen twenty-five special meeting minutes and July twenty-two twenty-twenty-five regular meeting minutes. I don't have any. Changes I'd like to make for the special meeting, but I do have a couple for the regular meeting minutes.
Does or? Want me to make a motion to approve the special? That's good.
Yeah. Okay, sounds good of you.
I'll make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes for July eighteen twenty-five.
Okay, Aaron makes the motion. We have a second to approve the July eighteenth special meeting minutes.
I will, I will set them.
Don't have a second?
Oh, yeah, it was there. It was a different one, sorry.
Alrighty. Alright, any, any further discussion on that one? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Very good. So I, I guess I'll just make the motion to accept the July twenty-two regular meeting minutes with the following changes. Um, in the claim section where it says Coons directed the town attorney, I like to make the change that Coons requested the town attorney to consult with the board. Also, there, um, on the the total for the finish, there was a transposition of a digit and it should be thirty-two, four ninety-two. Twelve rather than four forty-two. And also on the old business, um, we're, we're talking about, um, how we calculate the pops fee instead of say calculate a per operating dollar amount. Uh, I think it should say dollar per operating hour off sale liquor. I think, uh, my view that more accurately captures, uh, the intent of the board there. So that's the motion that I'm making. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Linda, seconds. Any discussion on that one? You all agree with those changes? Does that sound right to you? Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Conflict of interest declaration, if we get to an item of business in which a town board member has a conflict of interest, please state as such. Okay, town and FEMA updates, um. I don't see Joan here, but do we have any on your end, Anthony?
It's in my agenda.
Right. Any, besides that, any others? Okay, very well. Well, I guess we'll just move right into your section then.
The thing, uh, big news is I spent the last two weeks value engineering our north water tank to get it, get it in the budget without sacrificing, uh, some of the main principles. Uh, the main thing is that it was expandable, so we build the foundation so that we could expand the tank from hundred and twenty-seven thousand to whatever the height, I think, was over a hundred and eighty thousand. Expandable too. That would be my minimum. Um, and so we've got that into, into the budget now. I mean, as close as we can, uh, without looking at sacrificing expandability. So we had five hundred thousand dollars from Custer County. And, uh, so what I did was that bid had not only the water tank, but then items associated with its connection to the proposed new well, new Madison well, and then connections to the town and backup pumping and that kind of stuff. So I broke that into two schedules. And I had the low bidder win construction go through that other schedule that needed to be under Custer County's grant. And he got it to five hundred and thirty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars. So that still allows us that expandability. So I think we're, we're pretty close to to where we need to be. And, uh, I spoke to the A N R about, um, the remainder of those items. And so they'll have me put those in our updated estimate from the drinking water law. And then I have to get her, get her that updated estimate and she can complete her environmental assessment and then we can move into those, those items that are funded by the drinking water. So I think she will go make me rebid schedule B. I don't think that's gonna be something she's gonna let us award, just award to put in, so. So this will be a, uh, approved and notice of award. The new construction, the little bitter north water tank for five thirty-two. Four fifty-three.
I'll make that motion.
I'll send it though.
Linda makes the motion. Motion is recognized. Seconds. Okay, um, any discussion on this? Uh, just to clarify, so the amounts for five thirty-two, four fifty-three, we're gonna be getting a, or we do have the five hundred thousand dollars from Custer County. And so if, if we pass this, then we'll have to pay thirty-two out of pop, or is that part of the drinking water?
We had, um, we had that money in a CD, so we collected some interest on.
I think it was like sixteen thousand.
So it's gotta come up with another sixteen, basically.
And when do we exactly need that money?
Oh, before the end of the job. So, well, we need the money to start, but the grant money, we didn't renew that CD, so that's ready to go. But that sixteen thousand dollar difference, uh, we would need to come up with within a year.
How much of that five hundred thousand do we need within the next eight months? Are you thinking? Give me a guess, please.
A guess?
Mm-hmm.
I would say he's probably gonna order the tank, so he would probably draw the half of it at least.
The only reason I'm bringing this up is because, I'm sorry. I, uh, I seen a billboard that said that one of the banks is paying seven percent interest on seven, on a seven-month C D. And, uh, seven percent.
Last time we were discussing between two to three percent to five percent, right? So we moved it for the five.
Yeah.
And we had to keep it there for a minimum of six months.
Six months, I think.
One at big than one at eight.
Eight, okay. And this one's seven months. They're celebrating their seventieth year in business, I believe, is what it.
Seven percent.
Yeah, yeah.
We should look into that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Eric?
Uh, just Anthony, you can remember to remind us how, how much the difference was the value engineer, how much the drop was this?
We dropped over a hundred thousand. It was six hundred and something, six thirty-five when he was for that, for those bits. So, yeah, but we were glass lined, we were U S made. Didn't have to have all of your apartments, so.
Seven hundred thousand.
So I do think that we probably could take some of those ones and take advantage of that potentially. We could work it out, we'll see. I know we got it, we're gonna retainage on anything, so definitely retainage might be. So we can look into that.
Can I call it down, Randy?
Well, just take a moment here and then address the, yeah. Thank you, Eric. Does that window open too back there?
It should on like this one.
Alrighty, sorry for their interruption, folks. Anthony, you were saying?
No, I was just saying that we can investigate, um, that when we're after you get, uh, Quinn and, uh, notice of, but mine was a notice of award. And then we don't get a notice to proceed for like a little bit over two weeks for the next board meeting. And that gives us him time, that gives him time to bring in his, his bonds and insurance and everything. The schedule, and that schedule will give us a good, a good idea you know, when things are gonna fall in line, we can look into that. That might actually make up, could make up the difference potentially.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
There any, any more discussion on the, uh, motion on the floor, which is approval of the five hundred and thirty-two thousand for the North Water Tank project? Hey, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Linda, did you say? Our lines, Mr. Carries. Hey, Engineer B, approved FEMA brick grant twenty-twenty-five consulting services agreement.
So, um, this is our grant. Took a while, I mean, I applied for, uh, the end of twenty twenty-four, December twenty twenty-four, we, I should add. And, uh, we got it ordered early twenty twenty-five and then uh, finally, they, they got to the point where it does let us, uh, go out for to do requests for, for the town to do request for proposals and, um, I, I bid on it as I would as anyone else and, uh, so I was the only bidder. The only thing we had to do, though, is make sure that we covered all the requirements of FEMA. And because I was the only bidder, um, I was given more time, was given until July twenty-seventh to finish the grant activities. Gives us a lot more time.
What is it for? Sorry.
That now, okay.
It's your consulting services, but what project?
Um, so it's, it's a couple of projects, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you go to this page of the cost proposal, it's pretty good, but it's missing. This is the old one. I added a step seven, but this for the most part gives you a great idea. Um, so steps one through three in the cost proposal are all related to addressing what happened to the Battle Creek flooding in oh seven. So this, this study, this models the Battle Creek and provides scenarios and alternatives, uh, to address that flooding so that we mitigate it. Options include utilization, levies, all those kinds of things. And we're supposed to take that design to sixty percent that we can apply for construction money. So that's what the first whole part of it does. Um, the second part of it, we wanted to try to get some tangible benefit to our sewer collection system. Um, part four, um, we clean and televise, uh, with the assistance of our new tractor truck, um, all of the Ferguson side, because all that was flooded during, during the oh seven flood. And so we'll clean and televise all that for, uh, and inspect it for repair, uh, rehab. And put together a thirty percent design, which basically is the cost estimate. And those are all grant, grant and loan eligible activities through our drinking water loan program or through USDA, through USDA rural development um, that would fund, you know, rehab sewer, transition to rehab sewer. Um, so that's phase four. And then we do surveying of Whitney Street in phase five to try to eliminate those pump stations all along Whitney Street and replace that with a gravity sewer that would go underneath the railroad and then replace the line all the way to the Leggins. Um, so the, that, this covered, this pays for all the, the full thirty percent design of that system. So we know, we know pretty much what that's gonna cost and, um, what that entails, so. Um, and then phase six is just the application for grants to fund those other items. And then what you're missing here was, is the updated part, which was phase seven I sent in. And that is the environmental planning associated with these tasks. So especially tasks one through three, which you know, doing things to the Battle Creek involves a big environmental, uh, analysis. So that's covered in this grant. And Bridget need to make, needed to make sure we did that to comply, so.
And, uh, can you please just quickly state what item seven was?
Environmental planning, um. And there's supposed to be four, well, there's four parts to that. There was a desktop review of wetlands. There was, um, a review of, uh, well, there was a agency coordination with FEMA. Um, and then there was, uh, impact, I think, impact review, um, like environmental permitting. So like what permitting would be needed for that project so that we could figure out, um, costs associated with that.
Good. Alright, thank you. Um, Eric?
We need a motion, right?
I believe so.
You can have it. I'll make it a motion to approve the FEMA brick grant twenty-twenty-five consulting services agreement.
Okay, Aaron makes the motion. Is there a second?
Yep.
Ninety seconds.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on this one? If you guys have any, uh, any questions or comments you'd like to make, please raise your hands really high. Just to make sure that I see you. Anybody, um, Eric?
Yes, we were talking about looking at the sewer, the stuff going down Whitney Street. And at the same time, are they gonna be looking at the regions on the corner of Whitney and I believe Second Street where a dam built, I think I figured out what you mean. Yeah, um, so there's a couple of areas actually additional to, but they're small. The second Whitney Street is in the step one through three, um, fairgrounds place, the, the problem with drainage to get away to builder, that's included. And then the back alley, and who would that be, Third Street? Oh, uh, five of us. There's some drainage issues all on there. So we're looking at those three items as well and that. It's a lot less intensive. It's more like internal to the town storm-related drainage versus a big model of the Battle Creek, which is a bigger job entirely. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Very good, so, um, on to planning and zoning permit number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, quote, um, zero zero nine two eighty-four.
Yeah, I spoke, they came by for, and I spoke to them. They were gonna, um, try to get email, uh, email to Lindsay with, um, a description, like a listing of whatever parts and stuff they purchased and then take pictures of us, of it and send it to her. I'm, I'm not sure where that left off. I haven't seen them in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I guess, I guess I'll take a lead on this one since Lindsay was coming to do that and contact, um, ER and see about getting the documentation for the permit. We can consider that on a future agenda. That's how I look at it, everybody.
You'd like a motion to table or?
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table permit. Number two zero four five dash one six.
Okay, next motion to table.
Amen that.
Table until information received.
I don't need to talk about this meeting, that's my, um, problem.
Yeah, I'll try to get on that. SAP, so is there a second? Is there any further discussion on that one? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Linda, did you see it?
I did. I think I may must be being quiet, sorry. I'll speak up. Okay.
Okay, on to claims. Eight, eight.
Twenty-seven thousand dollar one, indoor outdoor panels for wastewater treatment.
Those panels are expensive. We had to get like three of them for that.
Those the electrical panels?
Yeah, so it, it's gonna run, uh, all the motors and everything. And I think we also have the ability to, to measure the level in the drop box to make sure that it stays. It's pretty high-tech stuff. So, uh, anyone like to make a motion or have any questions on the claims?
We'll make the motion to through.
Linda makes motion to approve. Here in seconds. Any, uh, just further discussion on the claims, Shannon?
Another question that, are these the two payments that we're still giving money back from the first tip?
Yes.
Thank you. We're just passing it on.
Yeah, we get it. So we keep our share and just give the other three introducing.
Yeah. Spotting that one out. Any further discussion or comments? Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Carries. Very good. Already on to Marshall report. I believe that's you, Eric.
So really not much has been happening. Uh, we just had the circus incident, mainly a lot of those, um. Public safety is really not a big concern at the moment, except for maybe some speeding down the Spanish Street, but nothing too critical. Uh, they tend to realize I'm here, so it was pretty respectful. All the motorcycles happened. They slowed it off. I haven't had any crashes here yet, so that's good. You know, here. If you guys have any other questions, do you want concerns or anything like that as well during my marshals?
Are you going to be here in favor?
I am, yes.
Does that mean the training got moved to November then? Where's? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, um. I mean, some of the things that you've seen with motorcycles as far as, um, I don't know, maybe help that you've rendered or anything like that?
Done quite a bit of rendering, uh, for assistance out on the seventy-nine. Uh, we've had trucks blow tires and almost take motorcycles' heads off, honestly. So then we had a crash over on seventy-nine as well, had aid in that. So he wouldn't get ran over by semis because they were in the wrong lane. Should've been in, should've been in the right, not the far left. And we're speeding, obviously. So been dealt with that a lot and then cows on freeway. Yeah, grab who owns those cows? Cause it keeps happening.
I've had that a few times.
Yeah, I had a wrestle one last week. But, um, uh, what else would there be? Maybe that's it, um. No, there was another one. It was closer up into, uh, Battle Creek. Another, we had a crash up there, but nothing serious, some road rash. Aid was going too hard and then they leave dirt out there when they're going throughout the rain. It's all washed out, ends up there, uh. It pretty much hit on a lot of stuff when it comes to that. Uh, I do want to let all know, there is a weird vehicle that's been driving around our neighborhood. You see it? Please take pictures of it. It is a all-black Custer County Sheriff's vehicle. And it is, it's, it's very similar to the marshal vehicle, except it's old. And I've already talked to Custer County, they don't have any of those. They have one black one and it's a big top of, it's not one of these. And it ran away from me the other day and I tried to ask this back, but no info. There wasn't anybody to point out here, no calls, nothing. So if you see it, take pictures of it. And the description of the gentleman who was driving. take pictures of it. And the description of the gentleman who was driving it, a little bit of heavier set mail, goatee, parted in the center with a soul patch. So you all look out for that because it don't belong to Custer County, but it's got Custer County markings on. All black, yellow, Custer County. Sheriff, it says sheriff and then underneath small Custer County. So if you see it, take a picture, please, because it's suspicious and it could be somebody mimicking law enforcement and that could be a problem.
Did you say that was a topo?
Uh, it's it's smaller than that. It's a year younger than, or you're older than the one we have, but it's smaller, slightly, but it's heavy. Because they had, and I've already talked to Custer County and they don't have any of that. They they removed themselves from that color. They all use the silver or gray pickup Chevys or the Suburbans, the big ones. So that's what they're running. They're not running whole black cars anymore. That they're done with that. So it's it's weird because I've seen their whole inventory vehicles.
You've seen the whole inventory. They used to um take the law enforcement vehicles that they were going to trade in and give them to other departments, like equalization. Well, are we sure that didn't happen?
If it did, they would remove all the tags.
You would think so, yeah.
But uh, the one I talked to, he said the last one they got rid of, they removed all the tags on it. He assured me, he even went through and looked there, removed tag off on everything. They even removed all the equipment because uh a lot of the equipment they do have, if it's going to either the rez, they remove it. And this had everything on it. Like this was fully equipped to the teeth. And I, and it was just weird. And he wouldn't look at me, he tried, and even when he got to the seventy-nine down here, when I called him, he bolted. As soon as he got to seventy-nine, I went north fast as he could. So I was gonna stop him. And I couldn't get a look at his face. And he wouldn't look at me when I drove past him. That's what made me look at him. So, yeah. And dispatch, obviously.
Did the wording on the decals look legit?
Yeah.
Like he ordered them professionally?
It looks like he was running out in a professional vehicle, yeah. That's what threw me off because I've never seen a black Custer County vehicle. The only one I've seen is the one that the school resource officer drives, and that's an admin car. That's a newer.
The emblem or seal or whatever.
I think that was after they got rid of this one to us and we took it. That's when they swapped colors.
Because I have seen that black.
Yeah, it's weird because it shouldn't be around. If you see it, take pictures and get a number on it if you can. I'll be glad to investigate it and then me and the sergeant will be looking into it. It's weird. So I don't know if he's going around town doing something he shouldn't be doing, trying to persuade law enforcement or whatever it is, because like I said, I called, see if any of the dispatch, no. So just keep him out.
Alrighty, well, thank you very much for that, Eric. Um, is there anyone on the board that has any questions for? Any, any questions from the community?
What, what kind of date did you see it?
It was around this time, actually. I was on my way to go down the forty here. Because somebody said there was a deer in the middle of the road. There wasn't. Um, but I was on my way there and that's when I spotted him. And it was just weird, so I decided to follow him and then went down into the uh the town here and we, I followed him all the way out of this. I don't know what the name of that, what's that road that goes all the way to the back? That's a Yep, and and I followed all the way up that path. I think he tried to get away. That's the, that's the part that was really suspect, so. I kept turning his head every time I got close up to try to see his face, even though I saw his face and he'd go past.
Okay, any other questions?
Wondering how it's been going overnight, you know, anyone?
I've been doing my due diligence on that. I haven't really seen much. I need, once in a while, get the uh the weird car didn't turn on its headlight situation, but that's because somebody wasn't paying attention. And that's usually come from the rez, forty. But I haven't had anybody walking around being suspicious. And I'm, I'm, you come all over the place, so I spot.
Okay. Uh, does it look like we have any other questions or comments? So thank you for your reporter. I know I really appreciate you and having you around and everything you do for us. I think it was a great investment bringing you here and we can, well, be a stick around for a long time. Very good. Alrighty, uh, looks like that's all we have for nine, so legal. Oh, okay. Do you like to speak about abatements?
Well, listen, I went around last Wednesday and did some abatement. And then since then, I've drove around and some that we were thinking, or that we had abated, have already taken care of the project. And uh, but I think the thing, the big thing is if you have a complaint about some buddy's yard or something, you need to file a written complaint. You need to make sure that your property owner is the one you're talking to. But I, I, as far as I'm concerned, we won't take any more abatements unless they're sheet filled out, right, Linda?
Okay.
Rain's holding, holding people up.
And keeping everything growing fast.
Yeah. I know. I got my mobile last week. I'm gonna use my mobile again this week.
All right, Linda?
Well, it also has to do with the fact that we're short-staffed in the office now. And there, there's the time factor, especially during budget time, is it's a big deal. And um, until we get somebody to fill the office, we're gonna have to forego some of the less important items. Well, like the abatements on some of the minor things, not things that would consider to be dangerous, but um.
That have, don't complain.
Yeah, that have no complaint, yeah.
I think these abatements should be to everyone in this town, just not certain ones. I think it should be everyone in this town, because if I drive around, I see places that are like, look like pigsty. And yet, they get by with it. They don't have to clean it up. And that's not fair for everybody else in this town who who gets written up or whatever on these abatements. It's baloney. It's a joke, really, that they're having these abatements, because how should this person have to have their yard cleaned up and this one looks like pigsty? It's not right. If they're, if it's for one, it should be for everyone.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Gary?
Yes, is the list of abatements that Donna and Linda came up with and sent letters out, is that public information? Can we get access to it?
I don't see why not, but.
That is another issue that's with the employee. We didn't even know if she'd sent any out. There's I found the last one, the last letter. I didn't find them all on the computer, so I don't choose the same letter and just.
So if you put in a complaint for an abatement, do you have to put your name on there or can you be anonymous?
Anonymous.
Okay, just curious.
Uh, Jerry?
Yes, the reason I was wondering if the abatements, this was the abatements for public knowledge, was because there's a board member that went around and telling people, her employer, that she wrote a abatement up on my property. I have concern if that, if one person's information's put out there to the public, then everybody should be put out there to the public.
Okay.
And the fact I don't even own the property.
Right, I mean.
And where that came from was a citizen during the last working meeting on Tuesday night had a whole list of abatements that he wanted to have looked at.
Right.
And one of them was the property that was for sale over by the dollar gun.
Yeah, and I, I believe you're speaking to uh the section of the meeting called items from constituents where we allow the town people to just come to the board with any, anything that they like. And, and as you guys know, um, just because something is brought up during items for constituents does not mean that the board will act on it. And, and actually, the board cannot act on it in the same night, so um I mean, we can look into that. As far as I know, there haven't been any abatements on property like that. Um, and if you, right, and if you don't own it, I mean, I guess you wouldn't be receiving uh the litter anyways, right? Uh, Shannon and then.
I don't know how it's done now, but we used to have like a list, you know, for abatements that we check and recheck. Those go in the packets. It's in the public packet included in there. I would say it's public information. Um, but those don't list people's names. It's just the address of the abatement. Point that out everywhere.
Uh, let's just, Jerry, one last comment, then let's move on to the next thing.
I guess what my concern was that now I mentioned the name, Donna Person told her supervisor that she wrote up an abatement on me that property. That was on Wednesday when they did it.
Oh, everybody.
Hold on, yeah, it's uh, I mean I, I don't know what to say about that, but it's kind of hearsay, so we should just move on.
Uh, I'm gonna chime in on that. So here's how we're gonna do this. If you guys believe someone's spreading rumors or talking about everything, just know this, if it didn't come from me or not writing, it ain't real. So we got, we got a squash rumor mill in this town, because personally, I'm getting real sick of it. And if I don't have facts or proof of anything, I ain't gonna listen to. So, we need to knock it off. I say high school. So that'd be really nice, right? And that goes for board members as well. I don't want to hear it. Because eventually that's gonna come up into a, a whole nother ballgame I don't want to get into. So, let's do that, yeah, for adults.
Alrighty, thanks, Eric. Let's, we belong to legal then? Uh, can't, there's nothing under your thing on the agenda. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I want to comment on uh, on the prepared for our jurisdiction agreement with uh, Pennington County. On the uh, the on going subdivision, I mean, talking to Neil Platten on it. And uh, the, I don't have a lot to report, but uh, the attorney, the state's attorney's office, Megan Krueger is her name. She and I have been talking day back and forth, that she thought she'd have some time tomorrow to discuss with it, but uh she was packed back here and stuff today, so I'll let you know that um, we're putting together that agreement that I'm still a desire of the board.
Yeah. Uh, thank you. I, I, I believe it is still a desire of the board. It's something that we need to have worked up, because I believe even the old one is has expired or there's a new administration in Pennington County that would like to do a, a new agreement with us. Is that the situation?
We've never had.
Yeah, we're not, okay.
Yeah.
Alrighty. Right, um, yeah, so Public Works Streets.
Alright.
Have you, Mr. Street Committee?
Got a lot in my brain, so sorry, folks. I know the gravel has been really bad lately with a lot of rain. Um, I've been going around, I've been checking everything that's being reported. I'm putting together a plan to uh help deal with it. So far, I'm kind of just sending our contractor out and missions to the really nasty ones, like there's a foot deep alleyway that got washed out. But in my investigation of our gravel roads, what I'm finding is that we have obviously major drainage issues all over town um that just instigate it. But beyond that, when we do gravel maintenance, I want to get us to the point where we're not just band-aiding and it washes right back away. And in order to do that, we need riprap. So I'm gonna be, in the very near future, I've already talked to Neil and and Anthony about it, looking for a spot in town where we can have riprap piled and gravel piled. And riprap is bigger, won't wash away. So when we have like a foot deep trench, we need to fill it with riprap at the base and then put gravel over top of that and it won't uh wash away again. But that's um I know the gravel's a nightmare, so but we're, I'm putting together a plan for it, me and Donna, putting together a plan. And um
We have to
Yeah, and the gravel, it's just, we're getting so much rain. It really is rough. Um, but making sure we're not just throwing gravel right in those gullies, because it's just gonna wash right back out. We have to get riprap road base in there to stop that from happening. So that's uh, we're looking for a spot in town where we can pile the materials that won't be in the way for the foreseeable future. Um, and then, once we have that in place, contractors can go out, grab a bucket, get to the spot, fix it, so we can really start banditing gravel and getting it up to snuff. Um, also, the work on North Second, um, all this rain has that contractor getting delayed, 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 delayed. So they haven't gotten out there to do that shoulder work. I posted on the Facebook, but it's still inbound um. Other than that, just uh, if you have anything, let me know. Send me uh, my number's up here on the card. Send me a text. Donna, contact Donna, let her know. We, we need as much visibility on the roads as we can um and get the work orders together and get it all sorted out. So, yeah.
Okay, Linda?
My question is the alleyway. I know down the alley behind my house is one of the washes. I don't know if it's a foot deep. Um, but what I do know is that it's been there since I have owned my home in the end of eighty-eight. From time to time, it has been whatever, straightened out, flattened out, whatever, and the town has worked on it. But I'm just wondering if that is the best source of our money to be used when an alleyway, people should be driving very, very slow on it. And it probably has, not probably, but it should have ninety-nine percent less traffic as a road. And that money could be, um, in my opinion, spent better on roads than on the alley. Now, I understand that we don't want the mud and, you know, the silk, so maybe a little bit has to be done, but I don't know, every time, and there has been some ripraps, some bigger gravel that have been put in those. But when you have these hundred-foot flood rains that come in a half hour, an hour like we've had so many of in the last month, um, I, I don't know. I don't know that it would hold. It never held before for very long, so I'm just talking money here. What's the best use of our, our funds?
Well, I think we need to uh look at the, excuse me, there's a couple alleys that is, are in the and then we need to look at them, but I mean, you go all over, any place in town. And it's washed. And, you know, we keep getting these rains. Well, it doesn't make sense that I put a Band-Aid on. They, you know, that we need to do something more. And I agree that we need to work on the streets rather than just like an alley behind Linda's house that is not a right away or driveway for anybody.
Um, the Mills household has used that as a, as their driveway. Um, but in all reality, is that I mean, for one person to, when they don't have to use it as an outlet, I mean, they have a lot in the driveway and have it. Yeah, well, yes. Anyway.
That's that alley that we did, that was one example, but like, like that particular hole, the average compact car going through that hole could have experienced damage. We need to protect the citizens' vehicles from that. And it's not so much like resurfacing the murals, it's just filling in. But I mean, task work is really not in a good way. The whole, the whole that old North, North Main Street is potholed and it's more just patching, but um, it's gonna, the part of the problem is we don't have the right material available to us on man. So it's really just a small pile of riprap and a small pile of gravel, so it can be done on demand, very I mean, we had the one in the claims, it was like between mowing and it was maybe seven, five dollars. Hold on, we go over and patch that hole, you know, and that might have saved somebody's vehicle a thousand dollars with the damage.
I just wanted to say, roads, alleys, anything as far as me as a citizen and probably a lot of other citizens, we'd rather see funds put to fixing their areas, whether it be alleys or roads or whatever. That's a cool responsibility of the of the town, so we, I think most of us would favor them being fixed and being fixed correctly. All of them.
Okay, next, Mar, uh, Mar.
Um, I was just wondering, Aaron, have you checked out from the school? That is a huge area to drain down the alley between third and second or fourth. And then after both violas, goes on violas, goes down Linda's alley too, washes everything out there. And I think that big And I think that big hard surface area there is probably an area that we should look at to maybe find a better drainage system for that.
Yeah. Drainage is a major concern. It's, it's a Band-Aid, you know, we're just Band-Aid and over, but real sources drainage, especially up on Task Force. It's all, it's very clear. It's all just how the water is flowing. It's not running into the ditches. It's running onto the road. We need to get it redirected into the ditches. In some places we've got cloud culverts in certain areas. We've got to deal with, we've got some, some serious drainage issues that we need to work through. But I just want to get, get to there. We, if we are going to pass, we're passing for the long term, not for like forty-eight hours.
Okay.
Um, in this last rain, was that about, about two weeks ago? When I called you Cal and told you that you should drive around and look at it. Um, I was, uh, it, oh, yeah, uh, there was water everywhere. But at any rate, um, I, I drove around and back when the school was, um, putting in all their building permits and whatnot. One of the things was they bought that, they bought that land and put in that retention pond to hold some of that water back that, that we complained about, that having that full surface covered was going to create that issue. And so they did put that retention pond in, but the water doesn't go there.
So it's going to run downhill.
Uh, well, yeah, they, they, they supposedly had put drains in there so that it would go there. And, um, I think that we have tried to address that with the school before and got nowhere, if I remember correctly.
I remember when they designed that, Ron was here and they had designed, you know, did all the calculations, went out and designed it to drain down Fifth Street. Down to the bottom of Fifth Street. Um, rather than violas, because we already knew that running down violas was already an issue with the old school before they redid it the first time. So I'd say the water's not going up to three or there's just a lot of water coming down. Supposedly the school was planned to drain down Fifth, not violas. Yeah. Where's it all coming from?
Okay, um, yep. Anything else on the streets here?
Yeah, I think, uh, maybe that's enough. Just keep an eye on, up to that New York Second. We're trying to get out to us, but the rain is following them and hopefully they'll get out there soon.
Okay. Yeah. I hope they can get out there and definitely need to get that recon and kind of solidify people in the next range. Uh, Mark?
I just question about, you know, it says the city or anybody from the city, have we actively sought any kind of estimate or pricing or ideas? What would cost it? To at least maybe blacktop the circle or the school, you know, to get these roads with drainage. So we're not cutting gravel culverts through and we're not having to have somebody constantly fix it. It would simplify snow removal. I, I'm just kind of a general question there. And is there grant money maybe for a small community? That, that could go. Okay. No, I'm not.
Yeah. Um, so actually I noticed this a couple of months ago. I got with Anthony, like twenty-four hours later. The Venice Grant Rider found one, a eighty-twenty split to do, um, for a population under, under five thousand access to schools. And we want to do the grant to go down, around and out, including repairing fit. So we're looking at that next year as a high, high priority to kind of look.
So second, Whitney.
Uh, no, um, fifth, fourth, down to violas over.
It's fifth and then violas up to fourth and then fourth up to forty.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which would be a great start for the community.
Yeah. That's, yeah, eighty-twenty split grant. We're high prioritizing that for next year just because of budgetary reasons. But, um,
But that being said, an eighty-twenty split is still a hundred thousand dollars, I'm, I'm guessing to do that. Um, that's, you know, it'll, we'll try to put it in the budget, but that's a lot of money when our street budget is normally Terry thirty. How much? Less than forty thousand. So that would be one, one area that yes, would be ideal. And we have talked about, uh, um, going to the, um, school board and seeing if they can help pay that money too. We are, we're searching, we're trying. So.
Okay. I did see a hand up back here behind you.
Well, it's a, a question. Last year gravel was put in the main part of town. Ferguson subdivision wasn't touched. We are still, our roads are falling off. They came in, um, from somewhere and repaired like at the beginning. They've, nothing was touched. Why? Why did they just do that and not continue on and fix our roads out there? Because they said it wasn't in the budget last year to do Ferguson subdivision, but they did in city, well, or city two. You know, and why was it this touch? We have roads that are holes in it that are falling off the side. Why?
So I, I've mentioned a couple of times, we're doing this work up on more to second. This is a new contractor. So they're going to do three hundred and seventy-five feet by a four foot wide for sixty-seven hundred dollars. If it works over there and it looks good, I'm going to start applying, well, talking, working with the board to apply that all over town. Because historically we've paid a lot more than that for asphalt. And the problem with the, the Ferguson development, it's kind of a mix of chips, gravel, some, some near pavement, and it kind of needs to be really.
They have years ago, put the oil down and that lasted a long time. That's not as much as the paving. Why can't we do that?
They really don't do that anymore.
They don't do that anymore.
I think it's a environmental thing. Anthony, uh, the, my seed oil, uh, now, uh, seed oil.
So that's just a seal, because we're going cracks. So they have alternatives now.
Yeah.
So you call chip seal. And so that would be just a, you know, road repair maintenance. And you have options for that.
Yeah. There, there's just not a good surface there. But these, these, this contractor working is kind of a testbed. They're very cost effective compared to other asphalt.
When will we find out if that is going to be working?
They're, they're supposed to be here any day now to do that work. And then once we get our eyes on the quality of that work, we'll start looking at giving them more. Cause they use recycled asphalt and it's, it's very cost effective. The work we do, they do, we just need to make sure that it's everybody's satisfied with the quality and their performance and everything. And then we'll start blanking to town slowly but surely.
Oh, yeah. And I, I'd just like to point out quickly too, that, um, the work on North Second is being delayed due to weather. And we, we did talk about that a little bit before, but that's specifically the contractor you just mentioned.
Okay. I didn't realize that. It was the same thing. I thought you were talking asphalt or the other one.
Okay. Yep. Uh, Linda, then Connie?
I, I was going to say the same thing, that actually he was kind of scheduled, as I recall, two weeks ago. Or maybe even three weeks ago. But the weather has just.
Yeah. Their previous job.
Been great. We're not getting forest fire, I have to say.
Alright, Connie?
I was just wondering if the gal right ahead of me was talking about like mag water. They used to mag water all the streets of them.
Yes.
Then that really didn't save our streets, you know, with their bottom, they went down so deep into the gravel. It just turned whoever's cloud and I don't know who it is. But yes, they destroyed our whole top. Yeah. Yeah. But I was thinking, I think you mag water.
Yeah, Anthony?
Yeah, um, that would be task control. Um, one thing that I've done in the past is, um, so if other towns are putting out bids for roads, if we can have some bid items that we throw in the bid for neighboring towns, then we can piggyback on their price.
Nice.
And so like you can do a milling resurface, you can do chip seal, you can do, uh, octar. And they'll have those. So the best thing I would do is to look at, you know, neighboring towns, what they're doing. I mean, obviously rapid, but I would think more along the lines of Phil City is.
That's what I call to get these guys that are doing this work.
Yeah, that's, that'll pay off. Yeah. If you talk to our neighboring towns and do what they got coming down the pipeline, then we can piggyback off that. And that'll make their price cheaper and our price.
Okay. That's a great idea. Um, Linda?
We, we have done that, um, with the, uh, um, highway department, when, especially when they are doing forty or thirty-six or the park. And it, it does save a little. And the, uh, Rich used to call us and let us know when those bids were going out. And we'll have to talk to not his name.
Sure.
At, in Custer, the head of the DOT in Custer. Bruce, yes. Thank you, Bruce. But get Bruce to call us when they're, when they're doing other areas and that might help too.
Okay. Very good. Um, so I think we can talk about streets to everyone's satisfaction. So, uh, let's move along to street light repairs and water and sewer department updates.
I might call man a little bit on the rap rock. They have a place up that. Uh, some city property. And a couple of those are on the end when stockpile it. I mean, I was just talking about where do they, road base there already. Not a lot, but there's some. Screen lights, the big lights are all working fine. Um, there are two panel lights that are staying on. I've got to do a research. And they are actually on by the top of the hall. City. We'll check into that soon. Anthony kind of covered the, um, water and sewer, what's going on there. And we're waiting back for paperwork from Sioux Falls on the parts that are needed for the back. Uh, I don't know what the problem is. We called them several times. They have worked on that truck before. It's going to be here by, you know, big break canal.
So just, uh, some updates on the water and sewer department. So, um, sewer, we are, is charging from the wastewater treatment plant. Um, we're rate, our rate of discharge is probably about thirty to thirty-five gallons per minute. Our, passed all our, uh, tests for our, our permit limits. So, um, we have a ECO level and a six thirty and we're discharging at one thirty. So, and, um, right now we're drawing down from just the, the nearby lagoon while we're installing all these control panels at the treatment plant. So we're kind of half the plant's running, half is waiting to be hooked up and what we're able to draw down. I think that, um, we can draw down to the low level in that one pond in eight days, given that rate. So then we'll be able to start drawing from B. We're filling up B south. All the, all the legions are now online. Um, so we had three legions. Now we have four legions and a big detention basin. They're all active and, um, filling the water. The last one was the secondary cell, um, that we opened up yesterday. So, um, so yeah, that's, that's at the tail end. We're putting up fencing right now and trimming up all the burns and getting ready for topsoil and seed and putting gravel. Um, we got all the scanning done on the legions. So the, we have all the asphalt drawings before they fill any of them with water. We scanned them with the terrestrial scanner. So we could get the exact surface. And then we're recreating this, probably the scans, the asphalt. We had to make some field changes to get, to get where we are. So that's all, um, space water treatment side. Like Chuck said, we're waiting on a quote from a company to fix the vector truck. That's going to then be put in, in work. Doing routine maintenance on the sewer system now, um, where we step clean the sewers. Um, we'll pick the areas that are the most critical, uh, fairground place is pretty flat and needs to have routine maintenance to prevent backups. And then we've got a couple of open work orders of backups that we need to investigate with the vector truck right away and jet those lines instead of cleaning and vacuum. So, uh, that sewer, um, with water, um, we're just, we're holding steady with our one well, Battle Creek. The wa, when the water tank comes online and we get connected, we'll have that, that other, um, water storage. So then we can look at repairs of our existing tanks. Um, but we're right kind of in the beginning of that whole drinking water loan project. So, um, the one thing I will say is we want to, I'm proposing that the institute, um, about turning the program. So, um, when you have main valves that can shut off different areas of the system in case of a emergency or a fire engine uh, gets hit by a car or something, we need to know that those valves, when you walk up to them, will turn and not just break immediately. So that's called valve exercising. And we need to have that program and start from highest priority isolation valves all the way down. And so we'll try to do a certain amount a year and, um, be ready to have some parts and, um, standing by and repair.
Okay. Very good. Um, any questions from the board on water sewer? I know I do have a quick question. Anthony, do we have the ETA for the treatment plant being done yet?
Which, oh, water treatment?
Uh, wastewater treatment, like all buttoned up and everything.
All buttoned up.
Um, we're waiting on panels, I think, still indoors and.
Yeah. Yeah. So I would say that by the end of the month, we'll probably be, you know, ninety-five percent plus. I don't think there's anything else that we're waiting for, but those panels, and they arrived tomorrow. So we're going to arrive here soon.
Okay. Thanks, Eric.
My question's kind of similar, but more, more specifically to the lagoon dirt work. Just thinking about fairgrounds. How, how long do you, before you expect all the dirt work equipment to be out there, out of there? So we can get into fairgrounds and get that, so fairgrounds can got, be gotten and do this, sort that, sorted out.
Yeah, I think we'll get to that level as well by the end of the month.
Okay.
Because the, they're putting up fencing now and there really isn't much more dirt work when they're putting gravel down. It's just going to be the topsoil and seed. So I would say within, by the end of the month, we should be substantially complete.
And, um, so any of the work that needs to be done, uh, from now till the end of the month is that likely to be impacted by weather at all?
I'm just rain. Every time it rains, it's muddy out there and they can't get in the day. Um, I would like to see the driveway from fairgrounds placed into the treatment plant for all season. I'd like to look at that as a priority, because then we can get to the treatment plant anytime. So I'm going to go there some time to see the conditions of it and then we can, we're gonna, and then ask them.
Okay. Is there any other questions from the board on wastewater? Any questions from the community members? Uh, Gary?
Yes, the contractor, the wastewater treatment plant that was getting the soil from up there, we went and looked at it. They got all they wanted. Uh, they put a one percent slope to the east and one percent slope to the south. They pretty much got it set up so that with the grass all the way around, it's, you know, run out from it. They did mark, knock out a corner. Proper pin and that they're putting that back in. I'm not, I didn't get back there today to see if they got gravel down. But it looks like pretty much that they've done what they said they were going to do. And most of AgD will be coming up with a letter after the gravel, verify the gravel. I'm up to the letter and send it to the contractor telling them that they satisfied what was needed to be done. And they'll send you guys, uh, a copy of that. So you guys know that contractor did what he was supposed to do.
Okay, great. Yeah, I appreciate that, Jerry. Thanks. Um, any other comments, questions? Uh, Linda?
No comment, no question. Just thank you. Again, thank you for all your hard work and contractors' hard work and, um, I, I think, I, I mean, this is a project we've been waiting on a long time and. I, I think, I, I think this is a project we've been waiting on a long time and to have it almost completed, I'm gonna give you an extra month by the end of September. I wanna walk through and see it all, the yeah, exactly, but it's awesome.
I will say that um next board meeting, the nineteenth, um I probably won't come in person, this is, I'll be arriving at the airport. Um so I'm sending John Burkhart, so you guys can ask him questions, or if he's the one operating with our treatment plant, he'll vanish. Um so you can meet the operator and ask questions and it'll fill into the new document.
Alright, um does it look like we have any other comments for wastewater or water, so um I don't see uh work orders on here.
We knew we were gonna print out all those air stuff.
Okay, well, we're still ironing out the kinks on right now for workers. Uh for people that didn't know, we do have a uh, what do you call it, an infrastructure tracking system now that we're working on getting all the work done in town into the system to generate work orders that need to be done and, and have that logged into the computer and it's um uh like a cloud-based solution and so uh we're still kind of working out the kinks on getting that figured out and so hopefully we'll have those work orders uh for the next meeting. So um on to streets, contract work, uh Dan, I believe that's you.
Yeah, thank you and just to clarify for victims' purposes, what we were doing, the facility, you know, it
Okay.
And that's what we get on the streets, but brought back to that level. For the last four years, I've asked if that would be chip sealed and never picked up any money following the U-Dat, unfortunately, so. That's why that street is once a bath, but then to just go over it with the young ones and all like what, everything is up and saying, won't do the job, it's gonna take a little more effort.
Well, the guy that did the snow took off everything and just it ruined our road.
So I made mention and Aaron and the board knows that I recommend that Ferguson Street needs to be chip sealed, if you're yeah, second street, you know, second street chip sealed, if you're a little loose down. Um and the circumstances and maintenance due that I did this weekend, I know the refs over here off of third street were really bad, I pushed them back in, dropped them down, I know they're gonna want it, but the circumstances were, I boomed all the streets, fixed the rest by the post office, fixed the rest and the potholes on fifth street. Uh fourth street and went through on brooming the rest of that, of course, all of that was volunteer time, so. This area's a balance on their budget as we've done for the last twenty years, so. And on uh the ballast rock that we have referenced here, it's, it's a great plan in certain spots, but we do have ballast material that can be used, which has been used. And it's down there and Ferguson, in the file, it's sorted out for asphalt milling. Uh so a guy doesn't need to purchase a bunch of ballasts, because we already have it. Definitely reference streets, we can do that out. The underneath material, if you go in and you're messing with them streets and pulling it up, you're gonna get into worse ballast rock. Um I cut a lot of corners, cut a lot of edges, so the drainage will get off. Also on Main Street, the same way, and I was gonna ask the board if they would approve as I did before, uh two loads of gravel from Main Street, you know, correct that and we've done that for twenty years, the same thing, you have to get the same potholes every year and it's just gotta be put down. There's three-inch ballast rock underneath of that base that bonds into it. If they put a blade on it, they're gonna pop every single bit of that up and make three times the work and cost twice the money to fix that, and now hold uh always have. So every, that circumstance, I'm gonna need some more gravel, so the other fixes and come a lot of the edges that I've been cutting, I use for the areas where we need to build up, so. So I, if Aaron is ever open to that, that's funny, I have that proposal still written up too to get together with, if there's ever that, I had CNS test control call me about the mag water, they're supposed to be sending the proposal to Terry and Aaron, here's the town, the mag water, all the streets in town like they did before. There was a process to get on that, Anthony needs to know, or there's no, know how we did it, what we did to ensure we get the best penetration on that, what we did for fixing the streets, putting them in condition and ready for it and then Anthony wants to know about ballast rock and what we can do and suggestions on the streets that'll work and what won't work. I'm always available to help and advise on that too. And as I'm head of the contracts and boom and do I'll continue to volunteer to help the street budget. See if we can get them to control on all of that, maybe do a little more of that.
Okay. Yeah, uh sir.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, I, I paid the mag water a couple times myself in there, and if you really lay that in there, that would have made it wash a little, you know, soon and go down the alley. I mean, you're talking about the alleys, not this alley here. Fix that, you'd make water that really good. Cause for a couple of years ago, I did that, it didn't rain, but it run off, you know.
But um like, when they come with the blade, they blade it all up and then they pile it into our yard where we have to try and mow over it and it ruins their mow and I wish they wouldn't do that, I wish they spread it around instead of dumping it into our yard, which is a little bit up with the blade, yeah.
Yeah, so just to clarify, um there was some, some discussion there about what my intentions are, as far as just dumping chips, I'll, I will never do that, that's not effective road maintenance and as far as chip sealing uh those roads down there, I talked to dozens of professionals, all with thirty, forty years of experience in asphalt. The chip sealing our roads right now that are in as bad a condition as those ones in the Ferguson ne- neighborhood we'd be throwing away our money, we got a quote, some seventy thousand dollars for chip seal, so we need to, we need to, they need to do thorough rebuilding of the roads rather than just a new coating.
But who did the maintenance as you come in to Ferguson, they did some edging? It's wonderful.
Yeah, yep.
Why didn't they continue down um McDermott?
Yeah, so that's um, that's pad sealing, so it's the same science basically as chip sealing, but that's on asphalt and what we have going around the rest, that that wouldn't be affected there because there's not an asphalt road surface that's held together.
It's on a gravel part, yes, the, the asphalt ends and then the gravel starts and they had continued on and that looks, it's wonderful. But they didn't continue on and fix that whole three, cause all of the uh McDermott is like this.
Yeah.
And poppers.
Yeah, and, and that, but what they use because of the surface on McDermott, it wouldn't stay, it wouldn't be effective, it would.
Why did it say in the other part?
Because that's an asphalt surface.
I'm not talking about the asphalt surface, outside, asphalt in. And they continued on just a little bit. But it's same.
Yeah, um I mean, I, this is probably a discussion that's better had offline, I mean, we're kind of getting into particulars and into weeds and stuff and it, and it's you're right, if you're asking the questions, but I think as far as the amount of time that we should take on it at the meeting in particulars I think we've got the death time, so uh if you'd like, uh please grab it apart and then you can contact um Aaron or myself. Um there's, we have our phone numbers and emails and everything on cards back there if you didn't know and then we can continue the conversation offline. Alright, thank you, um Trina, or sorry, Shannon.
Um, Dan, do you need a motion to order more gravel?
That would be appreciated if uh, I could say, I'll
Face gravel or?
Yes, it's uh three quarter base course is what we have and you know, first thing we're to put a load up on Taz, a load on West Main, a load right there by the wall on the truck stop, that would do a free location handle.
Um, I guess, I'm not sure where subcommittee duties and, and board approval begins. But if you have a bid for some repair work, I would think the board would like to see it. I appreciate what Aaron's doing and making the calls and getting a plan together for you know, a reasonable, something we can afford to do for a project, but our regular maintenance with you donating your times um and us paying for the supplies. I think that we need to stick with that, we need to do what we can, I know raining, you know, the rain is washing everything out, but we still need to try to keep up where we, you know, what we were doing and where we left off, so I think that would be a board decision to approve to let him order the gravel and and do what he can.
Okay.
And that's under maintenance, that's not necessarily under, need to done on agenda, right?
No, I don't see anyone making any motions, so.
Well, I'll make the motion. To order three loads of base course gravel for Paul's words and spread on Taz, West Main and by the truck staff, they'll fall holes.
I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't we get a bid for that? Was that part of your original bid?
Well, what it is on the gravel, the gentleman that Chuck was using with Mills versus Miller it was uh hundred and almost two hundred dollars a load cheaper with Miller for a bigger amount of gravel, which was running right at five hundred and fifty a load for Miller delivered and it was six fifty to seven for Mills, uh when you did the pad where you're gonna do the well originally down here on third. So that's where the price would still be with Miller.
Okay. Um, what's the board think about that?
Did you make the motion?
I did make motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Shannon makes the motion and Linda seconds for um Ferguson, three quarter base course, two lows.
Three lows.
Three lows. Okay, any further discussion?
I'd just like to say, Dan's looking, you know, getting the best price on the gravel already, plus he's volunteering his time using his own equipment on our streets. I don't think that putting it out to bid is required by state because it's under the twenty-five thousand or whatever's required. Um I don't think we're getting the best thing for our buck basically by letting him do it.
I, I would like to add that uh there is, there's no way no way possible that we're gonna get all the ruds, roads done to perfection this year. So the ones that can be fixed with some gravel and a little bit of repair, I, I mean, we need to do that, but roads are something that, that the citizens see and want um done as, as good as we can do it, that's there, we're all driving on it and it's all you know, creating dust in our homes and, but yeah, it needs to be handled.
Yeah, so this kind of goes back to the uh, the effective repair of the gravel, is we need the uh, we need the two parts, we need the road base riprap and we need the gravel on top of it. And the problem is that we just keep filling everything with gravel, it washes right back away, we fill it with gravel, it washes right back away, where if we get the riprap in there and it's sturdy and stable and packed and coating it with gravel, so I mean, I, you know, it's, it's.
Can we, can we do both right now and then transition to more ripraps, we have the stocks and the kind of the, we're figured out?
Yeah, I mean, if we could, rather than just ordering gravel right now, we could just as easily clear for the order of riprap and gravel.
Okay, Kathy.
Um, yeah, if, okay, say that they order all this gravel and Dan's gonna do it voluntary, you know, so is he getting paid to do all of this himself? Cause volunteering means you don't get paid for it, if you volunteer for something, you don't get paid for it, you volunteer just to do it out of your goodness of your heart. And I was just wondering if that's a you know, something that that a town can afford or if he's gonna charge the town to do this or if it, cause he says he's gonna volunteer to do it, but there's difference there with volunteering, we volunteer all the time, but we don't get paid for it.
Dan doesn't get paid for his time or work, we pay for the fuel in his equipment and his equipment, so we're reimbursing the fuel that he uses for oil and we're paying for the product that he's laying down. But not his time in the machine, that's what's donated.
Okay.
Sorry, I skipped over Trina a while back.
Well, I just was wondering um if this wasn't something we should go on for the next meeting, so we have that rule and maybe I'm applying it in the wrong place. Or if something's brought up that we wait.
That's why I have mentioned that.
Uh I'm, I'm sorry, uh I'm confused about that um rule that we have where we say if something's brought up, we don't address it, that's the same meaning that we, we take take it and put it on the agenda for the next meeting, I mean, I wanted to have the gravel and everything, but um we're rushing through it, so I didn't know if we were
It's a this is, the streets fall under street department and so when I made the motion, that was as a maintenance item for the motion under
Yeah.
streets and street maintenance, so technically that is on the agenda, it's not a new item that was brought up and then made a motion on it, if I'm just involved under street maintenance, yeah.
Okay, Donna, Ben, Eric.
Well, if you read the deck, dictionary, dictionary, uh volunteer means you do not charge for nothing, you are volunteering your work, your time and your equipment. So I would say volunteer no bill.
Alright, Eric.
Then he did the gravel.
You said you did not, no, no motion was made, correct?
I made a motion, Linda seconded it.
Okay, cause when you were speaking just now, that's why I raised my hand, you stayed there with the motion and then just seconds, we can go back and look at it.
I apologize, she's asking about if, if it's not on the agenda, you can't make a motion on the item that's not on the agenda. You can discuss it, add it to the agenda, but if it's not in the agenda, you cannot make a motion on it.
Okay.
So she was questioning why I was able to make that motion and I was explaining that it's under street maintenance as a department.
I get that, but you asked Dan if you can make a motion.
I asked him if he needed gravel.
You needed a motion.
If he needed a motion from the board to approve the gravel that he needs for street maintenance.
Right, cause what I heard was, do you need a motion or do you want a motion, right?
Because he's doing our street maintenance and he talked about needing gravel.
So many people get a chance, they know where that's, everything's happening, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Not really.
So, I don't know if maybe the board could authorize me to work with Terry a little bit on the roads budget. I think a little bit of what's going on is, I feel like we don't have enough funding. Um just a perspective, so like, Spirit Fish organized similar to us, but bigger, right, thirteen thousand, eight hundred people, their roads budget and that's personnel capital expenses and capital outlaying, eight million dollars. So you divide that by their population and multiple So you divide that by their population and multiply by our population, you should be at like over two hundred thousand dollars for road budget. Maybe just need to figure out why it isn't that, you know, and what they're doing to generating uh, what they're. How they're, yeah, how they're doing it, right? And then you do it in a small, much smaller way, but similar way. And that might help a lot.
Okay, um, I I know I have some answer back there. I don't know if we can. Okay. It seems to me like this conversation is kind of going a little circular right now, so. Uh, I think I'd just like to call a question and we'll just go right to the vote on this. And then uh, we can move along to the item D. So. Uh, anyways, all those in favor?
All right.
Uh, all those opposed?
Uh, none.
All right, uh. I guess, I guess what I'll do is all vote made for now. And then we can see uh, what Anthony can come up with and then we can move on to that. Motion fails. So let's move on to eleven D, who cut to repair back truck. So um, I think we're still.
Waiting for a call from two balls. They have the parts and the numbers and that stuff. They just need to get back to me a bunch of total cost of. Parts are.
Right, all right.
Call the three ton engine. Not really getting much of an answer.
Not, not even a guesstimate?
Well, they're literally going to take that apart, see what I'm saying. It needs a touch. Plate, actually plate, they're up there and. At the least, if. The five wheel and scorch or whatever, we probably take that in and have it resurfaced, but. They only asked to decay all of the parts. I really don't want to do that. And then you got to tarp it or do something because it's a closed deal. And we have a couple getting parts and it could be like, that's not good.
My. My question was because if we, I mean, if if this is uh, needed equipment shortly. Um, if we made a motion for up to two hundred dollars or five hundred dollars or, I mean, I have no idea, none. So that's why I'm asking.
Very seriously, you're going to get a construction plate and that stuff for. Eight hundred, two thousand.
All right, Eric.
No, I still have the part numbers and everything. I I I can get with you and we could start while, since we're not getting much back from them, we can see if there's other suppliers out there that might be able to do.
It hasn't come from industrial, so.
Darren, Eric. Yeah, fifteen hundred to seventeen fifty probably for that clutch. And I've got the part numbers and everything, I'll get.
Wait, the whole Martin J. will. Why do I ever receive that?
Okay, thanks, Aaron. Anthony.
If they are not successful, I'll give you a name and number in Michigan. They'll probably get that part.
LeBron.
Bring that guy out here and let us meet him.
That gets their weeds, I mean, you know.
All righty, well, it looks like we're getting closer to get that back truck hundred percent back on the road or it's on the road just actually.
Utilize.
Uh, utilize, yep.
Just really clear, who who's going to do the work?
Um, it's gonna be Chuck.
We gotta see what parts, Chuck, they're involved, I'll pull it back up to my shop. Use the order to motor, motor or transmission one's got to come out.
We're talking about the pony motor today. Yeah.
Bottom front of the uh. Back on itself.
You, what, you, what, what motor is it? Have you looked at it?
I've got pictures and stuff.
Is it a color or?
No, it's a Cummins motor.
It's a Cummins?
Yeah, there's a, so there's the, the, yeah, the pony motor clutch. And I think, I think that motor might slide on those rails on that frame.
Is it like the old three cylinder diesel or something?
Is it a three? I've got pictures on my, it's been like.
I'm just curious, who's going to fix it, the parts and how it's going to be more into you?
Oh, we're trying to get a hold of the parts first. You know, we can fix it, it's not going to be a big deal.
Okay, well, very good. Uh, let's move along to economic development. There's no item on the agenda, but Eric, or sorry, Aaron. Pardon me, being the economic development liaison, do you have any updates or anything?
Yeah, I didn't do a formal report this week. The next meeting was super busy last night. But they are still looking for someone who's interested in um, getting involved and kind of taking, taking the reins on organizing daycare throughout town. They did do that study to help, all the data on it. Again, as I, as it came back, it's kind of like, we don't have enough need to build a daycare center. We should be working on organizing at home daycares. So they're looking for somebody to kind of coordinate that who's interested in really digging in. And trying to coordinate that with people around town. Um, the. June sixth rock show um, next year, they're looking at trying tentatively to combine the Huxter with that. Talks about a possible harvest vessel as well. Um. And uh, one thing I would like to do is once the dirt, dirt donation situation is all buttoned up, I think it'd be nice to send uh, Hagby like. Like a letter of appreciation, something like, or I'm donating the dirt for the sewer project, just like something to formally show them our appreciation for that. I think that'd be nice. Um. And fuel the growth October sixth through ninth, uh, Black Hill State. University. I was kind of given the impression that um, it might be a good idea even for Terry to go to that because she is, as it stands right now, the. One of the hands in economic development from the town's perspective. So I think that might be a good thing for her to go to and then whoever else, but that's going to be October sixth, October sixth through the ninth. Fuel the growth.
In rapid.
All right, so, and confirm.
Yes, it is in rap.
Um, little talk, still working on the ambulance project, talking about that. Um. Yeah.
Were they at the meeting last?
No, they didn't come to last. It was a pretty quiet meeting, but it was nice. They're working diligently on the missions and vision statements and trying to get their, the business end of things dialed in, which is. Needs to be done because that'll help with their pathway to grants and other things. They need all that stuff buttoned up.
Okay, great. Thank you for that update, Eric. Okay, moving right along to finance office. Uh, Terry was like to present the financials and a.
I still have financial, don't have those next meeting. Um, the only update I have, I've been working on the budgets. I was hoping to have for this meeting, but. Due to the staff, we didn't get them done. So I'm hoping to have them with you guys by the end of the week so you can have them. Look, review a little bit before the meetings next week. So I'll do my best.
Well, thank you for that, Terry.
Couldn't even move those meetings while those, you know. I'm almost done, I mean, I was like.
Okay. So, but also the fellas in part of the states as well.
Yes.
Good, thanks, Terry. Um, so we have on the agenda the future. Yeah, I don't, I don't. Think we have anybody here for that at this time. So, so just move, move along. Um. I mean, with the motion to table, have you heard if there's uh, any developments in that or?
I haven't heard of anything recently.
Make, move it from the agenda. But not on when we have something.
Motion to remove by Shannon, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Within seconds, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, motion carried. Okay. Very good. So moving right along, new business fifteen A, the first reading of the supplemental appropriation appropriations ordinance. Uh, ordinance number two zero seven seven eight. So I'll just go ahead. And read through the um. Ordinance. Town, town of Pomosa ordinance number two point zero zero seven A supplemental appropriation ordinance. Be it ordained by the town of Pomosa that the following sums are supplementally appropriated to meet obligations of the municipality. Expender expenditures from the general fund, fund number one oh one. In the finance office, wages at twelve thousand. And legal professional fees at ten thousand. Engineer professional fees at two hundred fifty thousand for a total appropriation of two hundred and seventy-two thousand. If debt service fund, if debt service, debt service expense, one hundred and six thousand. The total appropriation of one hundred and six thousand. The following designates the fund or funds to which the money derived from the following source is applied. Revenue source of funding, we have an unassigned fund balance of two hundred and seventy-two thousand. For the total mean of means of finance at two hundred and seventy-two thousand. Also for revenue, uh, tip, tip debt service fund three oh one. We have an unassigned fund balance of one hundred and six thousand for the total means of finance of one hundred and six thousand. Day at this date of August fifth, twenty twenty-five. So. Anyone like to make an emotion? Actually, we don't need to make a motion. This is just the first reading. So very good.
The first, the first reading?
Yes, my first meeting secretary.
Right, Mark?
Yeah. The legal budget, that's over and above what the county had budgeted for legal already, right?
Yes, sir.
So we're, we're looking at raising that another ten thousand dollars. We, many of us here and myself and thirty other people. Have, have put together the petition to ask the town not to do that. We seem to be talking about not having money to. Find money to do streets, to do other things. Legal, everybody knows there needs to be legal service, somebody that can solve that. But we've been here an hour and forty minutes and nobody's had a need. For the attorney, I don't understand why, and many don't understand why, why an attorney needs to sit through every bullet. And it just seems unproductive. And it's an expense. So with the previous budget and this ten thousand, it's forty thousand dollars. That's a lot of money per citizen. It, it just doesn't seem right to many of us and we're going to continue the petition until this goes up for a vote, but. I think uh. I think it's enough.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Shannon?
I guess I don't think it's a bad thing to look at. Maybe renegotiating um, for maybe can't be available by phone during a meeting time. So that we're only being charged maybe the fifteen minutes that we need for the meeting. Um, right now, what's worked into his contract is mostly. Amount, it includes attending the meeting, driving here and there, and then a few extra hours to. To do other things when we have questions and whatnot. So I'm not opposed to that. Um, but like you said, we do need our legal and especially uh, we have three tips coming up. Um, that we're going to need a lot of his assistance with them. And it seems, it seems like every meeting there's something, something, one or two items. Um, but whether it needs to sit here, I think that's a more of an executive session item to discuss legal and contract matters. But I'm not opposed to it. I can see your point.
Yeah, um, I appreciate you uh, taking that on, Mark, and it's. An important issue to you and that's really how our government set up to work that. The citizens have an issue with the way that things are being done, then they should petition for a redress of their grievances. So I appreciate you taking that on and and getting that done. So. Uh, let's go, uh, Dan, Trina, and then Kathy, and then if you don't mind, I'd like to move on after that.
Appreciate it. And I think, you know, that um. The fishing and the radio awareness situation, but you need to address all subjects to them. Because you're also, as a supplemental, as Red should break your eyes open that it's also the finance. Department that it's going to be, even compared to public, but it's going to be. And then be looking at public works on where we have a new contract on the public work side of it. I mean, if you bring those issues, you need to address all issues, a little money to avoid. Uh, but what was just mentioned was mentioned at the last meeting too. And Mr. Hagler is open, but that he doesn't need to be at every meeting, that he can be addressed with phone calls, with emails or. Any other circumstance, and I think the boy is working towards that and was open to that for last meeting. So. I think it's a matter where. Public needs to address all subjects and all issues and look at all fees and all costs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Trina.
When is kids, I'm trying to, when do we re, refine with M for?
June.
June, June of next year? Oh, that's what I, I get for missing the meetings. Thank you guys. I'm sorry I've been absent, but I just wanted to know. Um, when it was up because I knew that we had done it last year, so I thought it was coming. I didn't know.
Okay, Kathy.
Um, but there was one meeting that, okay, they had another person have a resume put in here. For the job besides Hague. And Linda looked it over and she let him read it, which I think is unlawful. I don't think it's right that he should have read it. But it was in the media that she let him read it, that resume on that. And I, I think that was very.
I think this need to be put back out. That should be put back out, either there.
Because he, you know, he was lower than Hague. When he um, put in for, you know, had his resume in, it was lower than what he charges. And then he was going to be here so he could get in. It, it was, it was, it's in there. It's on.
Well, I mean, I appreciate your comments. Let's go, Aaron and Linda, and then I'd just like to move on from this. And if, if you guys have any specific instances you'd like to, you'd like the board to address, please fill out a complaint form. And, and then we'll look at it and we can draft a good response. And it's, doesn't have to come off the top in the meeting and we don't have to, and do a lot of the. Stuff. So anyways, but I do appreciate you making that comment, Kathy, taking. Eric.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I do not believe there is a contract of any kind. I believe it was a proposal which is, was accepted by motion. I do believe, do not believe. That proposal indicated anything regarding meeting attendances or other things. It was very basic, twenty-five hundred dollar a month retainer without really any. Further details as to how that money is supposed to be spent or how it's supposed to be handled. And there's definitely, I do not believe there's anything resembling an actual contract.
Okay.
I missed, you're right.
Yeah, you're right about contract and you're right. The difference is that um, well, kind of like with Terry and uh. He took his oath of office. The end of June for a full year. So you're right, there is no actual contract on it. So I would like to say that. And then the um. As if I'm remembering correctly, the other attorney that put in a bid was. Um, it was kind of a, not kind of, it was a conflict of interest. So he couldn't be. The part of it. So.
All right, uh, if you don't, if you don't mind, guys, this is just the first reading of this. And so uh. Like to move on to uh, item B on fifteen. But again, if you have anything specific you'd like the board to address, please fill out a complaint form. And we are going to do uh, another reading of this at the next meeting, I believe. So please also come to that and we can have a. So let's move on to fifteen B, first reading of the ordinance. Uh, eleven six, sorry. One hundred sixteen, one oh four, uh, politics beverages, malt beverages, excuse me ladies. Alcohol beverages, malt beverages, excuse me ladies, can you? Malt beverages and wine license requirements and fees. And I'd just like to thank, uh, Aaron for getting this together on short notice, and for those who aren't aware. Uh, we're doing some, basically some administration changes to the ordinance. We're not looking at making any substantive changes per se. Uh, other than moving all of the fees listed to a fee schedule. And then our intent is to adjust the fee schedule. Uh, such that the fees for the off sale liquor license will be proportional to the number of. Operating hours that the establishment is able to sell liquor and also, um, includes their hours that they're open. So, um, I'll just.
Yes, sir. Derek, you just want me to note the actual changes that were made, so, so it's great.
Yeah, if you'd like to go over that real quick and then I'll go ahead and read it.
Yeah, so, um, item A, it used to say as line, as outlined as follows, and then it had an entire chart of the fees. And now reads as outlined per the fee schedule, so all the fees will be removed from the ordinance and put into a, into the fee schedule with. All of our other fee schedules as applies to permitting to so on so forth, and then the same adjustment made to item B. Need to bear near the tail end, and then item D, what was in there for item D was a, a, a time related thing from. Nine years ago, so essentially it no longer served any purpose, so just to clean up the ordinances. I put in repeal, but the other, you could just leave it out altogether, but I, you know. Can be a nice practice to put repealed so that there's still history in there, that there was something there, it's just no longer applicable.
Okay, thank you very much. So if you don't mind, I'll, uh, begin reading the changes. So, um, sixteen B, an ordinance to amend town of Hermosa ordinance section one sixteen dot zero four. Alcoholic beverages, malt beverages, and wine license requirements and fees by amending section. One sixteen point oh four thereto to ensure consistent and, and application of related fees. Be it ordained by the Board of Trustees for the town of Hermosa that the town of Hermosa ordinance section. One sixteen dot zero four alcoholic beverages, malt beverages, and wine license requirements and fees. Be enacted to ensure clarity and sustainability as follows. One sixteen dot zero four alcoholic beverages, malt beverages, and wine license requirements and fees. A, with the exception of any considerations referenced within the sections of this chapter. Classifications and fees are established for off sale, on sale, on off sale. And or package dealers in distilled spirits, liquors, wines, and malt beverages as outlined per the fee schedule. B, the monthly operating agreement for a nonprofit organization. Or association applicant or holder shall be reviewed and set annually by the Hermosa Town Board. Upon the issuance or renewal of any liquor, liquor restaurant, wine, malt beverage, or temporary. License and shall not exceed the monthly amount listed for the equal classification of license listed within the fee schedule. C, nonprofit organizations and associations shall be required to provide a copy of the following items. Federal P I N letter, letter of incorporation, bylaws, tax exempt status. Additionally, an annual report along with any changes made to addresses, directors, officers, or registered agents. Shall be submitted annually to effectively maintain nonprofit status with the town. I M B is repealed, and the ordinance four point O was passed. Nine fifteen of twenty fifteen and may pass at another time in twenty fifteen. So, thank you very much. So. Now we're on to the items from constituents. So let's, I'll just read it through there in case, um, people aren't aware. So no action can be taken by the board on any related issue. Without being first placed on a future agenda to allow for proper notice. Reserve of time for public comments is fifteen minutes. This is a time for citizens of the town of Hermosa or owners of the property within town. Limits to express concerns or discuss issues having relevance to the town. Anyone wishing to address the town board during this time shall be asked to stand and identify themselves after being recognized by the board president. Each person will be allotted three minutes to speak. After, after these time limits are reached, all further commentary shall be made only with the chair's approval. So with that, um, start off with Trina.
I don't know where you are in the process of hiring a new clerk, but I thought about this last time this came up. And I feel like Terry does a great job, but her job description is beyond scope. And if we could consider, I ask that you would consider. Redefining those job descriptions so that Terry can focus on finances. You can hire somebody with more qualifications to manage the office. And that would allow, um, everybody a little equal distribution.
Okay, interesting, thanks, Trina. Uh, any, any other items? Kathy, right?
Um, I'd just like to say that I appreciate what Kathy Jones said as far as writing up. Abatements, all the citizens have ever asked for is for every citizen to be treated the same. And if you're gonna, they can choose who you're gonna write for an abatement, that is not fair.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Um, Gary?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Aaron, I listened to the last working group meeting. Where he was going through and, and when you were working on, actually one of the items that were at the first reading tonight. And I was very impressed with what the detail is and what the solution came out of that, and I just wanna say thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Um, Dan?
Yep, I just wanted to clarify, I know you had your streets was a long subject there, but. For the dictionary purposes, that volunteered to say three, um. Not once have I turned in fuel bill and oil bill or a labor bill for anything that I've ever done. And I've done, as if you ask Anthony, the last twenty years to maintenance on the streets. Would be well over twenty thousand dollars a year for a contractor to come in and all has been volunteered, so. You know, I just wanted to make that a very clear situation on that, that nothing was ever charged and always been donated. The only reason I was looking at what I was with gravel, which I appreciate Shannon because it was a streets. Item and it's just like it is in any other item on the agenda. When there's a subject or a material needed, it's allowed to be motioned for, for the subjects of that. With the bike rally, with the pair, I thought it would've been nice to bring that area up because of how much traffic comes in, you want your biggest. Accidenting areas as well as roaming streets and finishing up what I had going on, but. If that's not a subject, I, I have no problem not doing that either, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, let's go, uh, Dan, Kathy.
I just wanted to say that on second and Danny, the streetlight is not working and hasn't, super dark down there.
Okay, thank you, uh, Kathy.
I just wanna say, um, say hats off to Terry, I think she's very well knowledgeable and what she's doing as our finance officer. She knows more than anybody they've ever hired here, and I think she's just doing a fantastic job, so we're pretty good on it.
Okay, uh, did I see another hand up?
Yeah, Vicki Bolt, been a citizen here for twenty-three years now, when Ferguson subdivision just opened. We have not gotten sprayed for mosquitoes, why? Cause I get hit up every day. Cause, I mean, years, the mosquito sprayer was out there every night, you could hear it. You know, so I know that it hasn't been sprayed. And I wanna know why.
I'd just like to comment on that, Vicki, we have not noticed any mosquitoes.
I mean, because my house faces the, the creek. I know, I got lights all over.
Yeah, well, we have not noticed any mosquitoes.
Come to my house and go in the backyard.
How does, uh, decisions normally get made?
Why wasn't it done this year?
Because there was no state grants to pay for it. Um, or no federal grants to pay for it, I believe that, that. Uh, how much does it cost? I, I can't even answer that question without going back and looking at the records. I don't remember how much it costs. Um, but yeah, Fall River, um, is who we used to get, help get the grant from, and we'd share with. Um, quite often, I think it was Fairburn, and, uh, those grants were not available.
Do we have any money?
Um, that we have, we had leftover, um. Chuck?
Yeah, there is, uh. Turbo jugs of. It's left over from last year, so. Uh, it's just a matter of. Getting a lot lined up, I think, uh.
Monty?
I'm not positive he took it in on a date and had, uh, researched. But, you know, every time I've taken it, man, it doesn't have to do when it came to it, it's been pretty well established to spray. So, I think it's just a matter of, like. Get it lined up and do it.
And he has, we had pellets left, I, I think it's pellets, don't, don't quote me on that, but, um. Leftover to do the, um, ponds and the water retained areas, and he has been throwing them in. For over a month now, and, and, uh. I can't imagine how bad it would be if he hadn't done that. Yeah.
Well, especially with this monsoons we're having, uh, that creates stagnant pools and that's the breeding ground. For the years, or. I think it's just a matter of getting him lined up and spraying, we usually spray before the fair.
Yes.
And hold that down for flies. Tree hogs are giving us a lot of trouble because of honeybees. It's not funny to them, if they, if they stay home, we don't get it.
Uh, Dan, did you have something on mosquitoes?
Yeah, Monty was up today putting tablets and all in the standing water and then. He'd love to go out and spray, but I believe we used to get sixteen hundred a year in our grant money, and then. Labor, I, they run about twenty-five hundred a year. And he sprayed the fourth of July, um, and that was the last time that I'd seen him off, so.
Um, is there any other item from the constituent, no, sorry, Mark?
Um, I'm just gonna say back on the gravel, um, rather than use base course, why don't you use clean rock? That way we won't have the dust problem. And then the clean rock will work into the road surface better than your base course.
Problem is, you can't put clean rocks for your powder, so. If you don't want that portion of it, snow cloud, why? Anybody didn't line between snow and gravel. You have to leave a couple inches of salt, so you don't disturb the gravel. Uh, it's not a good idea to put a clean rock where you're gonna be falling, so. I did that on this park around here and there's been five inches for three, four years. Just pushed over the edge, you know, gotta bring it back and push it over there.
So, raise your leg over them. Instead of push the gravel off. Cause we always have to pull it back into our alley.
The problem in that alley, if I could explain that.
Uh, yeah, please do, sure.
Yeah, that over just left.
I'm talking about the other end. I know that one's washing out, but the other end is the end I'm talking about, cause my husband and I always travel out and use clean out.
Well, anytime you have a slow with gravel on it and you get quick monsoons, you're gonna have a washing problem. And go away and stop, make sure you save it. And you're sorry.
Okay, well, thank you, Mark, for your comment. Is there any, uh, any other comments anyone would like to make, I think, for constituents? Okay, I don't see any, uh, talk.
I was trying to bring it up very soon and I didn't, uh, number one pump this again. And it's personally. We'll be addressing that file.
Yeah, okay, thank you, sir. All right, well, uh. Kathy, are you, or sorry, Connie, are you raising your hand back there? Okay, sorry.
I'd like to ask Chuck a question. Chuck, is there any way that we can find out in our subdivision who keeps following the, the diapers and stuff? Is, is there anywhere?
Very hard to tell.
I know, but I mean, it's like, I live by myself and I have no dogs, no kids or whatever. And kind of.
Answers are pretty good, it's somebody.
Yeah. So, I mean, because we had to pay the last time. Um, and I, I really don't think it's fair to the people that want to do it.
Well, yeah.
I know.
How you're gonna segment it out, that's.
And that's fine, is there?
On that reservation.
Yeah.
So, once we get our vector operational, um, we'll do more routine backing of that station. And bring the solids to the units, and that should prevent clogging. I mean, it won't prevent it from getting, but it will prevent it from causing problems that stops operations. So that's part of the reason we bought the vacuum, was to do more preventative.
When you're pumping down, you can physically see what's in there.
Yeah, and then you suck it out and operate. The first time, that was gonna be rough, but.
All righty, well, I don't see any other hands, we have any other hands, okay? Well, I think we do have, uh, a need for an executive session or, uh, contract. So, would anyone like to make that a motion?
I'll make a motion to.
Yeah, you're right, we do have to trust the input first time.
Sorry, Derek.
Getting ahead of myself. Uh, so, Aaron, would you like to go first for trustee input?
Okay, well, thanks everybody for coming out, this is like probably the biggest crowd I've seen since I've been in here. So it's really good to see these people coming out, talking to us and wanting to get involved. And I really, if, if anything with roads, I'm taking pictures, it's all, it's all being tracked, so. My business card, my cards are up there, Donna's cards are up there, Cal's cards are up there, get the information to us and we'll target the problems, and. Especially potables, they're generally easy fixes, you just need to know where they all are.
Thank you, Derek, uh, anyone like to go next for the trustee input? Linda? All righty.
Okay, thank you, just thank everybody for coming, it's great.
Uh, Shannon or Donna, trustee input?
I think it's great to see the amount of people that came and here there, and the big, we know what the big concerns are with the streets. Just gotta, you know, and we don't wanna quit raining, then the farmers would be mad. So, you know, I think that we just have to hold on, it falls come in, we'll address it. And then hopefully the, get this second street dog here, and it will impress us, and so we can go on and do some more of that.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Shannon, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, um. I guess the first thing, um, we got this water. Consumption report and the thirty-five percent loss on the main. Kind of concerning. I know where they should be, thirty-five is pretty high, twenty-four, seventeen, thirteen, those ones aren't at twenty-six, eighteen, nineteen, but thirty-five. That was just my input. Twenty-four, seventeen, thirteen, those ones aren't at twenty-six, eighteen, nineteen, but thirty-five, that was just my input. Nothing we need to do on it then. At this time, the board doesn't, okay. Um, just wanted to say I appreciate, um, I do appreciate the work that Dan puts into the streets. Especially over the last twenty years and and you're right, he has not submitted a bill, even when we offered to reimburse the field. He still has not submitted a bill. Um, and without being able to order gravel, I just. Hope that's not discouraging Dan and that he'll do what he can before around the fair to. Whatever you can do is much appreciated. Um, mosquito strain. I think that item just got missed and if it's bad, I apologize and hopefully can. Someone get ahold of Monty and ask him to do some spraying before. I mean, since he's our person, I don't think it's a motion, but more of a directive since we're using old stuff anyway. And maybe it's, you know, down in Ferguson subdivision, I noticed when I worked here that um, a lot of. It it kind of rotates with the people living down there. I don't know. How that is now, but maybe it's just time to send out the lift station packet letters again, reminding people what doesn't go down. You know, because you're all on a lift station, so it's that area specifically and we kind of had put together a packet. At which point that kind of had some jokes about lift stations and then the important part, you know, so get them to read it. Um, that might help if people have changed, you know, down there, owning the house that. Don't know, otherwise they're just not listening, I'm not sure. That was it, but thank you everyone for being here. It's a great crowd.
Yeah, just like to echo the sentiment, thanks for everyone, to everyone for being here. Know you all can't come every time, but you know. You come for uh, all the issues or items on the agenda that are important to you and let us know what you think. I think that's a good thing. Anyways, thanks for coming out. Uh, so right now, I guess I'll entertain the motion for the executive session for the contract purposes.
I will. I will make the motion that we have a five-minute recess. And then go into executive session for contractual purposes.
Okay, motion is to take a five-minute recess and then go to the executive session. I'm not a doctor and engineer, so.
Uh, yes, this one's just a B man.
And how you feeling?
Yeah.
Really good. Yeah, I'm twenty-six weeks now, so.
Yeah, that's, that'd be him.
Right night, my husband and I went to the. Ago now, I guess, yeah. And got in some good hiking, so I, I'm definitely, I mean, last year you're doing twelve mile hikes, this year we're doing.
This is the first time I've noticed it.
Been hiding it.
You did a very good job of it. It was such a cute pose, too. I just love your pose, the way you dress, it's so cute on you.
Thank you, thank you. A little harder to hide it.
Yeah, do we have a name, maybe, or a couple to choose from?
Couple to choose from. Have a good evening.
Yeah, you too, honey, drive careful.
And statewide, we have to petition for like, I don't know if we have any bridges. But, tax access tax, economic development grants, so these are grants, transportation alternative, I've done T A. Rule act, this infrastructure fund program that might help us, cause. And now it's a K L D, they did a ton of safe streets and roads for all. So, maybe, was, did, uh, do you guys know, when you were there at the party?
I missed the party, honey, I'm sorry.
I introduced you to.
Yeah.
Economic development.
Oh, okay.
Got them talking, uh, we can get USDA. Rule development money, and actually, they could give her up to three quarters of a million dollars a year. The loan businesses to come into her house. And then she gets like, she's like a percent interest, so if you can charge like three percent. Pay yourself, do yourself a proper.
Not a bad deal.
No. When it's under three quarters of a million, you don't have to feel that federal report, that's just.
Well, there's, there's gotta have been one for ten dollars somewhere.
Do you want to find these tomorrow then?
Uh, what a crew.
Everyone drink plum liquor.
It's, yeah.
I was gonna bring some back.
Sure.
I'm going to see my best friend in college and his family makes the most famous plum wood liquor.
Oh, I need to be down here, though.
Called Eric Schubowitz as well.
Schubowitz?
Actually, the name is.
Sounds like sipping.
Yeah.
Hot sipping or cold sipping?
I think it's more cold.
Cold.
Or room temperature.
Well, that's good thinking.
Are we actually personnel also to discuss with the physician?
That's a contract, dude.
These are very light, aren't they? Yeah, this position back.
Well, that's, that's the personnel, that's not correct.
You don't sign a contract with employment contract in town?
Be nice up there.
I keep throwing up bad bees and we're just waiting for the good bees to show up. I have. Not my deal, I don't know, honey.
I mean, a great grandson, excuse me, have a great grandson.
This recently?
Congratulations.
You wanna hear what his name is?
Yeah.
Sebastian Leo.
Leo the lion, Leo the king.
No, not quite, I don't think, I don't know, I don't know who has to be here, so.
Anthony?
I'm throwing something on the. Neil named me, I'm headed out.
Well, you gotta think, isn't there a couple things you have? What was the thing you want? Gotcha.
I'll take a motion to exit executive session, please.
I make motion to exit executive session at 10:15.
Okay, 10:15.
Donna makes the motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Donna makes the motion here in seconds. Any discussion? Not all of us favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.